All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your attendance here at the city commission meeting. We will now call this meeting to order. We'll start with roll call with District Two Commissioner.
Keith Love, District Two.
Thelma Bowie, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Chris Sharp, District Three.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, thank you very much. Let the record reflect that a quorum has been established. We have six of the seven members of the commission present. I do want to remind everyone, it is our protocol and the rules of the City of Texas City. We need to remove all hats inside of the building and dark sunshades if you have any. Thank you so much. At this time, we will have an invocation. We are very happy to have Pastor David Buckley here with us. Pastor Buckley is from Sanford's Temple Church of God in Christ. If you would make your way to the front, sir, Pastor Buckley. And after which, we will have Commissioner Garza lead us in the pledges. Thank you.
God, our Father, we thank you now for all things. God, we thank you for your grace and mercies. God, we thank you for this meeting. We thank you for our mayor. Thank you for those men and women that surrounds him and provide services for this city. We pray now, God, in your son, Jesus' name, that you continue to watch over us, watch over our homes and our families, God. And we'll give your name glory, we'll give your name honor and praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The American pledge, the Texas pledge.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Union and Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you, Pastor Buckley, for that invocation. You have any announcements you'd like to share with the citizens of Texas City? Anything going on special at your church or anything you'd like to share with us?
We just finished our women's conference where we have our Sunday services. If you're looking for a place to join on Sunday or come out and visit, it's on 5508 Phillips Street in Texas City. It's a Pentecostal church, so if you're coming for a quiet service, you're not going to be in that environment. So it will be a very lively service, so you're all invited. It's 11 o'clock on Sunday morning. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we are up to reports. We have some reports. We'll hear from our very own Recreation and Tourism Fitness Director, Mr. Mike Richardson, as he gives us a report on the Lowry Fitness Center.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Richardson, Lowry Fitness Center. Good to see you tonight. Just going to go a little rundown of how the years went for the Lowry Center. So, membership fees and rates have basically been the same. Nothing has changed. The only thing that really has changed is for the youth ages from six to 17. And that was something that was done a while back because we had youth ages going to 15, but charging them an adult price, which didn't seem really fair to some members. Hours of operation, still the same, Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All our youth members, while school is in session, they can only get in at 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And out of session, 11:00 a.m. We changed the time from 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 a.m. for our youth during the out of session. It's going over really well. We have a lot of youth in there, working out, being dedicated, not bothering y'all out there on the streets, so that's a good thing. The new dumbbell set, this is what we ordered this year, the U-Max dumbbell set. The members seem to really, really enjoy it. I don't know about the new weights. For some reason, they all seem heavy to me, but that's just something we got to deal with. Active membership profile. This is our three-year active membership. As you can see, from 2021, 2022, we had the active members 2,421. Last year, 22 to 23, 28, 37. And this year, from 23 to 24, we actually had 3,008 active members. My report is given a little before we actually close out the fiscal year, so I am missing out on some numbers, not to pat myself on the shoulder, but I'm doing a great job over there. Let everybody know. This is our membership breakdown right here. It's broken down by adult, family, senior, silver sneakers, and our youth. And as you can see for the three-year breakdown, our numbers are steadily rising. If you look at the family, which is the orange, you can see it going from 56 to 102 to 128. Another big jump is our seniors. And I think a lot of that has to do with a lot of our adult members slowly moving into our senior ranks. And the one that I like the most is seeing our youth utilizing the facility, going from 78 to 237. That's really a good thing right there. And this is just a breakdown of our resident, non-resident breakdown. As you can see, we kind of maintain around the same area, 18 to 82%. Two years ago last year, 17% non-resident to 83%. And this year, 79% to 21%. It basically stays within that, those numbers all throughout the year. So we still really do a great job of serving our community and still are open to our out of resident people who would like to come and join. This is our ship program that the mayor created for us. And my intern this summer was Savannah Ubryne. Savannah's in a white shirt. She has tasked, biweekly with different tasks. So in the picture, she was actually teaching one of our aerobic classes. She did a great job, actually throughout the internship. Savannah picked up information really well. She did a great job at the front desk for me, picking up our civic rec system, taking people on tours. She became a fixture. People started knowing her by name. She just did a really amazing job. I think it was a great program. And I think because of this program, I actually benefited a lot from it by having quality young people to come in and intern for me. Savannah is graduating this fall from University of Houston Clear Lake in kinesiology, where she hopes to move on to UTMB to study, to become a OT. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a PT, physician trainer. So we're wishing her the best and hope for the best for her. Last but not least, I like to relate everything to working out. All great achievements take time. Believe you can, that's half the battle. I see a lot of staff that I don't see in the gym, but we ain't going to go too deep into that right now. But as like I say at the Lowry Center and the Park District thing, everything is moving smoothly and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Richardson?
He needs to understand that working out is not a race. They'll get there sooner or later.
Thank you for that report.
And there is some of us seniors that go every day.
That's right.
I don't consider you a senior.
But there is some.
You take the spin class, I couldn't do that. Y'all have a good evening.
Commissioner Clark is a regular at the spin class, as well as Mr. Dixon. You know, but some of us are taking the slow route to the fitness center. I'll see you there soon. Thank you again. Right, at this time, we're up to our public hearing. We're going to open our public hearing at 5:10. And we're going to hear from our very own engineer and planner, Ms. Kim Golden, a public hearing to address the innerfield group, which is requesting a zoning change from District O, which is open space, to District E, general business, for a proposed convenience store and retail development located at 1411, I'm sorry, 1414 FM 646, on the east side of Vicksburg Lane and west of Highway 146 North. Ms. Golden?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. So this is a request to rezonate a little bit over nine acres. It's located on FM 646, just to the east of Vicksburg Lane. They are also subdividing it. So they have both the rezoning requests, the site plan, and the subdivision have all come through at the same time. That's the way we usually package them, so this is the rezoning. Their intent is to build a convenience store and a retail center. And it has gone through Planning Commission and Zoning Commission with positive votes from both with no objections. And there were eight letters that were mailed out prior to the public hearing at the zoning commission, and there were no objections received.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Golden relative to this rezoning request? Or this information? Is there anyone here in the audience who's here to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Is there anyone here in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this rezoning request?
Motion to close the public hearing, Mayor.
We have one more item in the public hearing. And then, but we'll move on to the next item if we don't have anyone to speak on these two. Next, we're going to hear about the Alpha Omega Power LLC is requesting a zoning change also from District F, which is light industrial, to District SP site plan for development of an electric power generating station utilizing lithium-ion battery energy storage system, also known as BEST, located at 701 Highway 146 North and north of the existing Golden Rule Logistics.
Yes, sir. As you noted, this is a rezoning request for a BEST project. This is the first one that has come to you that's considered a utility size. It is a little over 200 megawatts. It is located on a little bit over six acres, I think 6.7 acres. There on the, let me see, get my directions right here. It's on 146 North, it's on the west side, just north of Golden Logistics. It's actually directly across 146 from the TNMP substation. And so the locations of the substations are the things that control where these kind of projects go. It's an economic thing, but then it's also a matter of, you know, they're actually feeding into that substation. And we have information from TNMP that advises this particular substation is one that really lends itself well to having the capacities of these battery storage projects tie into them. So it has been through both Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission. The recommendations coming to you are recommendations to approve, but they are not unanimous. The planning board was a 3-2 vote and the zoning commission was a 4-1 vote. And the site plan, which is a part of an SP, has been reviewed by staff. And they have done the things on the site plan that the fire marshal and building official have requested, which in particular are the separation of 15 feet between the containers, also the provision of a paved perimeter road all the way around it, and the provision of two separate access points. So that is the project that's before you. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Ms. Golden? Ms. Golden, I do have a question. The yellow portion in question is where the battery units will be stored?
Yes, it's actually that entire rectangle that's being rezoned. I'm not sure why it's colored yellow, but it's that entire rectangle all the way from the frontage road to the end of the, so it's that entire red rectangle.
And so this main street we see in the middle of the map is 146?
Yes, sir.
Is there any required setback of the units from 146? Or how far close to the road would they be allowed to be?
So I don't have the site plan in front of me. I believe that they have, they are abiding by the standards that we apply in the gateway. And so I believe there's a 40-foot setback, and there's going to be a masonry wall there, and there's going to be a good bit of landscaping provided as well. So they are providing all those kind of enhanced things that are the, you know, standards we apply to these projects.
And the other, looks like a street I'm asking on the west side of that, is that a drainage ditch or is that a road?
So the west boundary is the, there's a railroad, and I think that's also the pipeline corridor, and there is a drainage ditch there as well. It's not the water drainage ditch, but there is a drainage ditch there. And that's what you're asking about on the far west property? Yes.
Yes.
This is the location that's ideal for this type of thing, right?
Well, it is in a light industrial type setting, which means it's not proximate to a lot of residential, and that does tend to be a better place than close to a lot of residential, yes. I will tell you as well, there were some concerns raised at the planning board in zoning commission meetings about the proximity to the Gulf Coast Water Authority's treatment plant. And so I actually reached out to them, provided them with all the information, and got an email back from them that they had no concerns. The separation lended to it by the railroad and that intervening corridor caused them to not be concerned about it.
Any more questions, Commissioners? Is there anyone here at this public hearing to speak in favor of this rezoning request for this BEST project? Yes, sir. Come on, make your way up to the podium. State your name and affiliation, and we'll hear from you.
Good evening, folks. I'm Simon LaBras Gianna. I'm with Alpha Omega Power, and I'm the developer on this project. First off, I want to thank Kim for gathering all the information and presenting to the planning zoning board. She's been very thorough, and that's what we like when we have a project like this in this community. I want to let everybody know that we are here to answer any questions. I realize that this is relatively new technology. If anybody wants to stick around after and ask us questions, we're here to answer them. And I want to also add that we are a Houston-based company. So we're not an out-of-state company that's just developing our project here. We very much so want to be involved with the community, and we want to make sure that this project goes smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this project? Or in favor of this rezoning request? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition of this project? You can make your way to the podium, sir. State your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Jose Boyk. I've been in this town since 1965. And we appreciate the mayor and the commission for allowing us to have this kind of forum. Let me, I had this at the last of my presentation here, but I'm supportive of the technology. Why, my biggest point and my biggest concern is the haphazardly way that I think we are approaching these battery storage systems. So I keep harping about, I've been here before and I've been talking about it. I'm on the planning board, I'm a substitute of the planning board. But I think, what I think we lacking is that I don't think the commission knows exactly what these batteries are for and so on. So let me go on, and I challenge them to explain to us, the community, things like, such things like, why do we need them? What are the goals and objectives the city has and for them to achieve? What are we achieving to having these batteries? How many do we estimate we need? How many, I call it gigamegabytes of watts? You know, maybe, I don't know exactly what it is. But for some reason, we need to have a purpose on that statement. What do we need and what for? How are these evolving and scattered projects going to effectively work for our benefit? I want to know as a community, how is that battery out in Timbuktu is going to, you know, help my house out here by GoHartel? I don't know. How are the potential scatter plethora of BEST projects going to affect our fire department as they may need special equipment to safely manage emergency issues? Some of these batteries are known to deflagrate. And actually, they actually evolve some gases that are noxious to us. I'm a retired chemical safety environmental engineer, so I speak with a little bit of knowledge of that. And then, are we likely to have future, what I call BEST superfund sites? With so many independent owners? And who will be responsible? You know, there's just a few other questions. And my main thing is that, again, I support the technology, but I'm against the way that we haphazard are developing the project, at least to me, for the community. And my perception is my knowledge, you know, what I perceive. And I keep hearing, we don't know much about it. And I understand that we hired a professional contractor for kind of an interesting odd $49,999 to do some help. But I think what we need to do is have a master plan developed. Why, what are we expecting for? How is it going to help us? And where are they going to be located? These scattered, you know, I call it the old gasoline station or 7-Eleven BEST projects. You know, I don't think we should have that here. So again, these are just my thoughts for your review. And I believe that the council should take a very proactive stand on these projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyk. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition to this project? I actually do have another question probably for the developer. Is that okay, Commissioners?
Sure.
What is the proposed lifespan or life expectancy of this operation? Is it something that has an embedded permanence into the infrastructure of the city? Is it something that would be a 30-year business and then you kind of move on somewhere else? What's the life expectancy of this project? And I have a part two to that question.
And that question I can answer. If there's any technology-specific questions, we have our technology expert there as well and our fire safety expert. But the lifespan of these projects is 25 years. In our contracts with the landowner, do you know? We have the option to extend that for another 10 years. So it can be from 25 years to 35 years.
Okay, and my next question is, maybe Ms. Golden can answer, or you. At the end of the 25 or 30 years, if you and the landowner decide to part ways, do we have contingency plans in the development that completely cleans the property up of all remnants of this BEST project?
And I, do you want to answer that, or? Okay, let me take a stab at it, and you can hop in there. So that was, that's actually been a hot topic of discussion, right? The decommissioning plan that we have and putting up a decommissioning bond. And we'll, I think, go back on certain numbers. I'm not sure if you saw the email I shared with you yesterday, but the plan is yes, to have a decommissioning plan and a decommissioning bond that will essentially remove everything from that area.
Okay, it sounds kind of tentative. Ms. Golden, would that decommissioning plan be solidified in the development before we make a major decision on it?
Yeah, so that is going to be tied down as part of the permitting process itself. So during the permitting process, the fire marshal and the building official will have quite a list of things that the developer has to provide to actually get a permit to actually build the project. And among them will be the commissioning plan and a decommissioning plan. It will be their safety plan. It will be their plan for annual training of public safety. There'll be some testing requirements. I mean, we have, there's quite an extensive list that's being developed from the literature. And then also the consultant that you all authorized us to will be helping us develop that. But there are some industry standards that are evolving pertaining to that. And that is where it will be tied down specific as to this project and specific as to the site, that those things will be addressed.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Do you have a question about?
If you're going to speak, you have to make your way to the podium and give us your full name and let us know if you are for or against this specific project.
Against.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Michael Zirkel. I was wondering about the lithium-ion batteries. You're planning on putting a bunch of batteries next to ditch, but lithium-ion batteries, a single-cell phone lithium-ion battery is very poisonous to water. So how many batteries are they going to be put in? And do they have any cleanup issues? And since our limited liability, any lawsuits that poison the fish and all that? How are they going to be paying for that? Since our limited liability company, it won't hurt their base.
Anybody from the company who wants to respond to that, you can. I will say, we don't have any, I don't think we're next to a body of water that has...
The ditches go out to the bay.
Well...
There was no water in that, right?
There ain't no water in the dry ditch. It was a drain, and I don't think there's live, you know? There's nothing live in a dry ditch.
Yeah, but all that stuff will go out to the bay, and that'll poison fish.
I'll let them respond if they have any environmental responses to your question.
Mayor, I can also tell you that that will be one of the submittals that will be required is, you know, how they will, in the event there is a firefight and there is water, how that water will be contained and retained and, you know, so that it doesn't run into any ditches. Again, that is one of the typical submittals.
All right, thank you, Ms. Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Alan Rhodes, and I work for the actual manufacturer of the batteries. So I appreciate everybody, excuse me, being here tonight. And I'll try and see if I can't address, and if there's anything you still have a question about, please raise your hand. The batteries that we're looking at deploying here are actually tested in four different phases, if you will. We test for single fill, gather that data. We ramp up to module. That was the black, I guess we didn't have a picture, but essentially, they're a big black battery case about the size of a sheet of plywood. And there's eight of those in each of the cabinets or compartments. They're then tested to the unit level, which is in the entire stack. And then finally, we do a test called the beyond test. The actual enclosures that the batteries are in are essentially sarcophocuses. They are sacrificial coffins, if you will. They are designed to take the worst-case potential deflagration, and they are also designed and tested for the worst-case fire scenario where every battery within the enclosure goes into thermal runaway. And that report, both of those reports will be given to the building department, planning commission. Many of them, well, in fact, all of them will be in existence within the next two to three months. So we're right in the middle of doing the deflagration testing. And on the 23rd of September will be the full-scale fire test. So the intent and the pass failed criteria for that is, there can be no propagation, so no fire, from enclosure to enclosure. And that the worst-case battery event remains essentially self-contained. At the point of the thermal runaway being completed, then that entire enclosure can be essentially handled as waste and extracted from the site and then processed at a certified recycler.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, any other questions?
No questions here. Last call for anybody in the audience to speak.
Are these, all the batteries are going to be standard? Like, is batteries going to be everywhere in every project?
Not necessarily. He's just speaking on his project. We're just speaking on this project.
That's part of the issue.
All right, there's nothing else, we'll entertain the motion. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close.
Public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to close the public hearing. It's been seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The public hearing is now closed at five-thirty. We are now at the point of preliminary zoning approval, six-eight. We will consider and take action on the interfield group's request for a zoning change from District O, open space, to District E, general business, for a proposed convenience store and retail development located at fourteen-fourteen six forty-six on the east side of Vicksburg Lane and west of Highway one forty-six north. This is what we just had the public hearing on, Commissioners. Any additional information, Ms. Golden?
No, sir.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this rezoning request, seconded by Commissioner Love. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Our next preliminary zoning approval, item six B, is to consider and take action on Alpha Omega Power LLC's request for zoning change from District F, Light Industrial, to District SP site plan for development of an electric power generating station utilizing lithium-ion battery energy storage system, also known as BEST, located at seven-zero-one Highway one forty-six north of the existing Golden Rule Logistics. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Oh, I'm sorry. Any additional comments? Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Yes, sir, Mayor. So when we rezone to District SP, that rezoning is specific to a site plan that has been approved by the planning board. In this particular instance, there is one outstanding issue about that site plan. And the outstanding issue has to do with the second access and the means that it's to be represented. Our convention in all of our subdivisions and plats is to have easements represented on the plats. And so that's what we have asked for here. The property owner and the developer have not agreed to that one point. And so we have recommended to the planning board and to the zoning commission, and both have incorporated that in their recommendation, that any approval will be subject to that second access being represented on a plat. Now, as Commissioner Garza knows, an easement is as effective as a plat to actually convey the right of passage. But what we, as our practice, is to require it on an easement because it's so much easier to find it years and years from now and for people to understand it. And so again, that is a convention that we apply to, you know, all of our plats and, and throughout our subdivision regulations and things. So that's the one outstanding is that your approval will be conditioned upon the second access being represented on the plat.
Can I address that, Mayor? About the applicant?
Actually, the, the public hearing is closed. And so if you wanted to address something, the public hearing would have been the time to do it.
Obviously, it wasn't brought up during the public hearing.
But you had an opportunity to do so. Okay. So at this time, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve based on the condition of providing a second easement.
I second, based on the condition.
A motion has been made to approve this rezoning request, provided that the necessary requirements of the second easement are platted at, at the approval of our engineering and planner. That has been seconded by, I'm sorry, the motion made by Commissioner Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Knoxon. Any other questions?
Discussion. Does this satisfy the way the motion was made, Ms. Golden? Would that satisfy your requirement or your concern?
Yes. I believe you all are accepting the condition we've recommended, which is that the second access be reflected on a plat.
Perfect. Thank you.
Motion has been made by Ms. Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Knoxon. Any other further discussion? All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Two opposed. Motion carries with a five-two vote. Motion carries. Let the record reflect Commissioner Love and Commissioner Sharp were opposed to this project. The only request, I'm sorry. All right. This time, we are up to public comments. We have an opportunity for the public to address the commission. We have two people who have requested to address the commission. I will call them forward. First, we have Mr. Malloy Scott. Make your way to the podium. And Mr. Malloy Scott wishes to speak on the Kofelt Arena.
Good evening. My name's Malloy Scott. I've spoken with the mayor, the parks person, about the Kofels Riding Arena, about making it convenient for people to ride in. Nobody, I met with the parks representative about a year ago, heard nothing back from him. I spoke with the mayor. I came to a city council meeting, showed them proof of how the water stands in it. Take a few loads of sand to fix it. What did they do? They go out and fix the parking lot, which was fine. But now since we've had the hurricane, half the fence is gone. There's a wire after the last time I was here speaking, from the telephone poles, from the lights, fell down and it was laying in the arena. Well, I knew, I know a little bit of electricity. I know it wasn't live because we've been trying to get the lights on for the last ten years. We can't. But I came here today to say that all you people sitting there, when it's time for election, you get out and you beg the people. When the people come here and ask you guys to do something, we don't hear from you. The last time I was here, a couple of board members, I was talking about the park, y'all were talking to each other. I don't know if you heard what I said or not. But I'm gonna tell you, people remember things when election time come around. So nobody has, like I said, responded to me. And I'm pretty sure now, since half the fence is down on it, you probably, guys are probably going to tear it on down. And I explain to you why we would like to have it fixed. Because when we go to Jack Brooks Park, there's so many people out there. I'm teaching my grandkids to ride horses. And these girls that come out and ride, well, everybody that comes out and ride, some of them don't have any respect for other riders. I've had a grandkid, one of my horses got spooked and he fell off and stepped on his arm, but fortunately, it didn't hurt him that bad. But I'm asking you guys, y'all have taken everything that the blacks had going in Texas City. Carver Park, you closed all down, all the swimming pools. We did not ask them for much. A riding arena. When the guy was leaving that, when they first built that, it was kept up and maintained. But now, since he's gone, y'all could tell us what happens to it. And you're proving it to me. You could tell us what happens to that place. Because I haven't heard from neither, nobody that's in that district or anybody on this board about that place is what's going to happen. You can't say that you can't get in touch with me because I left my phone number on the paper that I filled out. Now, I guess my next step, if I don't hear from anybody, is to what you're going to do with the park? I guess I'll have to go out and get a petition, get all the people to sign it, to get something done to that place because we need it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this next point, we have a request to address the commission for Mr. Pastor James Pastor Daniels, I would list your topic, but I cannot read your doctor's handwriting right here.
Yeah, that is tough, man. I probably couldn't read it down myself.
That's all right. I'm gonna let you speak. Go ahead.
But if you need me to tell you what it is, it's about the employees and community.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, you got it?
Yes, sir, I got it.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, and to this beautiful gathering of citizens of Texas City. I really like this because of the fact this shows that people are interested in what's going on in this city. That was a time when we'd had a, had a meeting here a few weeks ago, and I couldn't make it because I was in hospital. And I wanted to let the community know that I supported our police chief and the police department too, because we've all worked together from time to time, and I, I supported you all as a commissioner. And that has not changed. But with my being the vice president of the public sector for the United Steelworkers, I have a role there too. And it was brought to my attention that the employees are not going to get a raise this year, a cost of living raise. And I've been, I've been retired here for nineteen years. And before that, I worked twenty-plus years. And I kind of, I cannot remember one time when we didn't get a cross-the-board cost of living raise. So I would like to ask the commu, ask the mayor and the commissioner to rethink that. And the reason why I'm asking that is because Texas City is a flourishing city, and I know that you're not in the red. So if you want to keep good employees, and you do have them, we're one of the best-run cities in, in Galveston County. And you need to take into, take into consideration the rank-and-file employees. And I just don't think it's right that high-echelon employees could get different raises. And then the employees that's doing the work, like I did for better than twenty years, that's why I'm on this cane right now, because of that. And I just don't believe that they should not, you should not rethink that and try to get them some kind of a cost of living raise. Another thing is, I'm a retiree. And I, as I, as I, as I have heard, our, our raise is contingent on whether the rank-and-file employee or the city employees get a raise. Now, if they don't get one, then, brother, you, you my commissioner, look up at me when I'm talking. You, you going in my pocket.
I was looking at you.
And I'm, and, and, and I need to, we need to do something about that. And like I said, I respect this commission. I respect the mayor. I respect all of you all who work for the city because I did it for over nine, over twenty-seven years. But I'm telling you now that local one, local thirteen-dash-one with over three, around three thousand members, we're not happy about that at all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yeah. So thank you very much, Mayor, and I hope we be talking about this again. Because this has really gotten kind of shaky. You all forget about my hair here because this is a sixty Afro.
All right. All right. Looks good, Pastor. Looks good. Yes, sir. All right. That concludes our public comments. We're now up to the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have before you consent agenda items eight A through E for your consideration. If you'd like any of those pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this time. I would like to pull item C.
I move to approve items A, B, D, and E on the consent agenda.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve items A, B, D, and E on the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I just wanted to pull item C to kind of point this out to our citizens, those of us who are here. It's to consider and take action on resolution number two-zero-two-four-dash-one-zero-five, approving contracts for employee medical, dental, vision, life and disability health savings and flexible spending accounts, and an employee assistance program, and authorizing the mayor to execute those agreements. Ladies and gentlemen, our, our human resources director has been hard at work, as she always is, researching different options and opportunities and benefit packages for the employees. And our, our insurances have gone up across the board, but we have found a, another insurance provider who has also gone up, but has offered more opportunities for our employees. And so our employees' insurance has gone up to the tune of about two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Instead of passing that expense on to our staff and our employees, the city is willing and, and is projected to incur those expenses. And so oftentimes, we talk about COLA and, and adjustments and things like that, but there are other forms and benefits that the city is assisting our staff. Instead of your insurance premiums going up, we are, we are proposing entering in this agreement and absorbing those costs. So that is item C for your consideration.
Motion to approve item C.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve item C, as seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And at this time, we are going to go into an executive closed session. Those of you who are in attendance, you are certainly welcome to stay, but at this point, we will leave into a closed session to discuss some personnel matters. We will reconvene from that closed session in about thirty minutes. So I do want to let you know, if you're going to wait around, we ask that you just be patient and wait with us, and then we'll come back and close out this meeting. Thank you. Well, now the closed session, it is five forty-seven. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are now going to reconvene our regularly scheduled city commission meeting after our closed session. The record reflect, it is six fifty-five P.M. We are now back in general session. Ten, item ten A says we would consider possible action concerning personnel matters discussed in executive closed session. At this time, there is no action to be taken on the matters that have been discussed in executive closed session. So item eleven, we are up to Commissioners' comments. We'll start with you, Commissioner Knoxon. Do you have any closing comments?
No comment, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Love?
No comment.
Bowie?
No comment.
Commissioner Garza?
Ditto. No comment.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I have something. I, I'd like to see a plan made for these best projects. I don't have any. I'd like to see a plan made for these best projects. I don't have anything against the technology. I just want a plan done first. I'd be more than happy to move forward with any of them. I'd just like to see a plan first.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Clark?
No comment.
So I'm up to the mayor's comments, and I will say this, for those of you who stuck around here long enough, I want to say thank you for your time and your, and your patience. I will go on record to say that the city of Texas City lately has seemingly been under attack on social media. Some of you have had the opportunity to see those things, and if you have not, then just totally disregard everything I'm saying. But if you have had the opportunity to see those things, I want to let the citizens of Texas City know that we are committed, the people you see before you, we are committed to continuing to serve the citizens... to continuing to serve the citizens of Texas City and making this place one of the best places to live, work, and play. This award-winning administration that you see before you has always placed the citizens first. Oftentimes, like I said before, families may disagree as to how we settle some things and how we approach some things, but as we seem to be under a social attack or things like that, I would just implore the residents to continue to stay informed, to continue to do what you're doing right now, and showing up at these meetings to let your voices be heard, showing up at the community conversations with Mayor Johnson and any other town halls that we've had. We welcome that. We want an informed constituency. I would also ask that you would just, just continue to, you know, support your elected officials and the executive staff around this city and bring to us the concerns that we can address. But outside of that, those are all the comments that I have. Thank you, commissioners. To the staff out there, I might have one general question, one general announcement to all staff, if you have any announcements to make. I know Mr. Branson has an announcement to make.
Please, everybody, come out to the Beach and Barbecue Bash on Saturday, September 7th. You may have thought that you were going to have to be in the mud in the park. Well, the good news is, we turned everything around, and now it's facing the convention center, and everything's going to be on hard payments. Come on out Saturday, this coming Saturday. The gates open at 5:45, entertainment starts at 6:30. There'll be a variety of vendors, food trucks. It's going to be great. Hope to see everybody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Branson. Looking forward to a successful Beach and Barbecue. Anyone else at the city? Mr. Ramari?
Since Corporal Hurd spoke at the last meeting, I guess he lost his voice, so he gave me two announcements to make. The first one is that on October 1st, we have National Night Out, so please, if your neighborhood is going to join in the festivities, please let Hurd know so that officers can also come. And then on October 4th, TCPC has a sportsman's tournament that supports United Way. They're still accepting teams. I think that's to shoot clay.
Clay shoot?
Yeah.
Ramari, thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Both of those, the flyers out there at the table, it's QR code for you to register for either of those. Also, Tuesday, September 24th at 10:00 AM, T has administered a new breakfast at the Dolce.
Thank you, Corporal Hurd. Ramari said you found your voice all of a sudden. To everybody else here, thank you for coming. Anybody else on staff? All right, at this moment, we will...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. This means adjourn. Thank you all very much.